Hey, well, good evening. Today is Monday, October 16th, 2023. Not a whole lot of days left before Christmas, so if you hadn't started, you better get started. Hey, we are glad you're here today at the Rowan County Commission meeting. We begin our meetings the same way every time is we're going to have, do we have a chaplain? Are they, huh? Oh, they're on Zoom. Yeah, so we have, we have our own chaplain that'll bring our prayer. We're also going to have a pledge of allegiance, our prayer led by our chaplain. This is called a solemnizing prayer. And to give you a definition of that, it's not for you. You're welcome to listen if you like, but it's for the commissioners because we take very seriously the decisions we have to make on behalf of the county, and so we seek wisdom in those. And so we're going to have our chaplain lead us here. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, chaplain, for being with us. Sorry that you're not here in person. Hope you're well. All right, I've got a couple of changes, not many. If you'll look at item number two, A through G, it's our special recognition. I feel like that just, that got put on the act of agenda. They meant to put it on consent, so we'll just make that consent item Y as in yellow, consent item Y as in yellow. Does anyone have anything else they need to adjust for us? All right, if not, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
No move.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, and then we have before us the consent agenda as it was amended, motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. All right, so we'll move next to public comment period. Let's see, we'll begin with Pam Bloom. Pam, welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Pam Bloom, I live in Salisbury. I was unable to attend the September 18th meeting, but I did read the coverage in The Post, and who better than the commissioners to address the question that Mr. Eds had heard after the community conversations of, we got money sitting somewhere. Chairman Eds asked the county manager to go into detail about how the county spends the funding it receives for human health and services, and Mr. Eds added that almost all of that money was passed through money, or money that the state or federal government gives to Rowan County to disperse as needed. Mr. Eds also said that the county is actively working with organizations such as Rowan Helping Ministries to help them find avenues for funding, such as the American Rescue Plan Act. My question that I recognize will not be answered tonight is, where can we find the county commissioner's plan or budget line item to specifically address the unsheltered, what we call our homeless population here in Rowan County? I appreciate all of the time you've put towards economic efforts, but I think that we need to know that our county commissioners are also being that original and looking for new ways that they can have their own Dennis Rivers. Because I know Mr. Rivers, who works with the city of Salisbury, has been out to deal with issues in Dan Nicholas and other places within the county. So this is not a Salisbury city issue just for Rowan Helping Ministries. This is an issue that affects all of us in so many different ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Thank you for coming. Next, Margaret Basinger. Well, that's fine. We can move on and we'll come back to her. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
All right, Alyssa Redman, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you so much for your time. And I specifically wanted to thank Chairman Eds for his time. He came by. I live in the Knox Overton School District. My kids are eight and 12, and I had a lot of concerns when I heard about the reporting coming out of the school board meeting that happened, I believe at the end of September, regarding the plan that was to be a K through eight facility built with Knox that is now going to be, it looks like a three through eight facility at Knox, and then potentially a pre-K through second facility to remain in the building that is Overton Elementary. I had a number of concerns. You and Sabrina Harris from the, the school board came and spoke with me for quite a number of minutes, and I really appreciate your time for that. And so there are some concerns that I have lingering, particularly for the children that will eventually attend Overton, because my understanding is there are no funds currently allocated to continue that building into whatever perpetuity is going to look like for that building. My understanding is that when you agreed to allocate funds for a K through eight at Knox, you were considering Overton to be off your books. And so my concern is just to, to raise this as an issue that is going to have a number of teeth in it for you in the future, that parents are very concerned about the, the status of that facility that was slated to be demolished and is now going to hold some of our most vulnerable kids. So I just want to put that out there as something that I'm incredibly concerned about and watching very closely. And I also just wanted to take a moment while we're waiting for Margaret to get up here and remind you all of the litigation that remains in our state bureaucracy that is known as the Leandro case. I believe you should all be aware of it. It's been ongoing since I was in public schools in North Carolina. It would have impacted me as a student had it been passed. Whenever it was originally intended to be passed, it has yet to be passed through all of the different iterations that it needs to go through so that the funds can actually be released and our children can benefit from them. But I did just want to note, last year I went to a great presentation, and some of the people that were there were from everychildnc.org, and they were talking about the funds that children would receive in Rowan County specifically if Leandro was passed. And so I just wanted to throw some numbers at you, just in the hope that this will maybe sway your opinion in one way or the other, and that potentially you could have conversations with some of your colleagues that are serving in Raleigh, some of the folks that, that have the ability to, to move this along for us. But right now, I believe in Rowan County, children are receiving approximately $6,700 per pupil from the state right now. And I don't know if that includes the funds that you guys distribute, or if it's just the funds for, for North Carolina. But if Leandro were to pass and those funds were to be released, we would see a 40% increase in this, in the spending in Rowan County per pupil. So that figure would go up to about $9,374. We would be able to hire 200 new teachers in Rowan County, over 100 new teachers assistants. We'd be able to get 23 nurses in our school system that aren't there right now. My child has epilepsy, and she attends a school in Rowan County where she does not have a nurse every day on staff. Previously, I sent her to a school in Cabarrus County where I knew that she would have a nurse every month, but I wanted her to be closer to home once the diagnosis was finalized, even though I knew she would not have a nurse in her facility, which makes me feel incredibly nervous as a parent. And kids would get about $200 a year for school supplies that they don't already receive. We'd get 50 school counselors and another 50 social workers in our schools if Leandro were to pass. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. You're probably going to hear a lot about school funding for the rest of your, your time in the council, in, in the commission, and so I really would appreciate it if you would consider advocating more for the, these funds from the state to be released to our, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And you may want to check October 23rd, I think, at the school board meeting. They're going to address that. We did address that, but they're going to address Overton specifically, so that should alleviate some of your questions. Okay? All right, Margaret, welcome. Thank you for, thank you for coming. All you want.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. My name is Margaret Basinger. I am going to speak tonight about Knox Junior/Middle School. I taught there from 1969 to 1978, and I met my husband there, which was probably the highlight of my years there. When I came, I learned about the position at Knox by reading about it in the Charlotte Observer. I didn't know anybody in this county except Martha West, a fine one to know. But when I came for my interview, I was met by Harold Eisenberg, the superintendent. And at that, at the very interview, they took me to Knox Junior High School to see it. The principal, Frank Shaver, drove, uh, drove me there. And from the moment I saw Knox, I was amazed at what I saw. There was this beautiful dome that I found out was the gym, and Mr. Shaver, who I never ever, in 18 years, ever called Frank, took me into the building, and from the very beginning, he started telling me about the history of Knox. I learned from the very beginning that Knox was an amazing school. Its curriculum was designed by Mr. Eisenberg in conjunction with John Chase, the Director of Education at UNCC. And he and his team studied the best practices of junior high schools all over the nation before they created the curriculum for Knox. The curriculum for Knox was a school within a school. There were three different buildings, one for the sixth grade, one for the seventh, and one for the eighth, and each building had its own principal, lead teacher, and guidance counselor. And all the core subjects were taught in these buildings, and the students were allowed to go out to their elective courses outside of these core buildings. The electives at Knox Junior High School blew my mind when Mr. Shaver told me that in addition to the journalism that I would be teaching instead of English, it didn't bother him, that I had never had a journalism course in my life, he said if my dad was a newspaper man, I would be able to teach journalism. And I proved him right. But anyway, the elective courses at this school were Latin, French, marketing, journalism, band chorus, orchestra, and 10 more. The, um, the academic directors were from all over the, oh, academic directors from all over the nation came to see Knox because it was so extraordinary, and I loved my years there. Okay, flash to 2023. I was shocked to read in the Salisbury Post that Knox Middle School was going to be torn down, and I could not let it go down without a tribute. And that is why I wrote a Knox, a book about Knox, which you can buy at the bookstore. It's called Memories of Knox. You can get it on Amazon. But anyway, um, it didn't really matter to me when I read about the possible arrangements, whether it would be K through eight or four through eight. All I cared about was that the new Knox be stellar, stellar like the Knox was in 1959. Now, don't get me wrong, I truly, I, I was a public school teacher for 32 years, and I believe that all the Rowan Salisbury schools need to be stellar. But Knox is the only public middle school of Salisbury, which is the county seat of Rowan County. Now, my first idea was the tribute, but now I'm on a soapbox to tell you how important I think it is that the new Knox be so fine that people choose to go there not to charter schools, not to private schools, but to Knox. And they will go there because it is innovative. The building is going to be okay, but we need better supplements to draw the best teachers, and then we need something new. The old ideas have not worked. They aren't working yet in our county. Look at our scores. We need to look at something new. And for Knox, the new Knox needs to be just as stellar as the original one. The directors of curriculum need to examine the best practices and the best models of, of curriculum all across the nation. Have the best supplements, you get the best teachers, and then you come up with a new plan, a new plan. Examine plans that succeed. Examine plans that have shown success across the nation. So, that's my soapbox. Soapbox. New Knox needs to be finest middle school in the state, just as it was in 1959, and the men and women sitting around this table can make it happen. You have the money, you have your hands on the money. It needs to go to public education, and this middle school needs to be fine so that when businesses are looking where they're going to go, they come to Salisbury, they come to Rowan County, they come to the finest middle school in the state. Thank you for letting me speak.
Ms. Basinger, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. I would encourage you as well. I don't remember the time. I do remember the date, October 23rd, at the Rowan County, um, the, the, what am I trying to say? Central office, the central office. They're discussing all that. I have spoken with school superintendent. They are very excited about the new Knox, and they like the new plan. They're telling me more than they did the old one. So I don't, according to her, there's no funding issues. So they're very excited about this. So just, I'd encourage you to go to that October 23rd meeting and ask questions or call up the school superintendent and ask to, ask to speak with her, so. Well, you could ask her about that too, because there's a plan for that as well. So you, you can ask her about that as well. Thank you for, for coming up here. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move on in item number four. Let's see. Approved resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Mike, do you want to read this resolution?
All right, you can read the whole thing.
Sure.
Make sure Connie can hear me. Can you hear me, Connie? Okay. Resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Wish I brought my glasses here.
You want these?
I'll fix it here. All right.
Can you, can you read it?
Yeah, I can get it. All right. Whereas the residents of Rowan County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who serve in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Rowan County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of the foreign war, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civil communities annually, and as estimated 20% of these service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transition from military services are at a high risk of suicide during the first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans, and whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of the United States military personnel and believe specific recognition should be accorded to them. Now therefore be it resolved, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners will designate as a designation as a Green Light for Veterans County hereby declare the week of November 6th through November 12th as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in this, in the observation of Operation Green Light, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners encourages citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who've made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their place of business or residence. This the 16th of October 2023, and that's a form of motion.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Appreciate you bringing that forward.
This is, uh, this is the second year. We did it last year, so this will be our second year of doing that. And just to remind the citizens that we'll be changing the lights on the outside of most county buildings to green bulbs for that week.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Jay, next item. Well, the, go ahead.
What we're proposing to do is to transfer almost 25 acres. It's the tract that's to the rear of the current Fair Association property on Julian Road. We have 25 acres still behind that that joins the Rowan Cabarrus Community College property. I think this is in conjunction with some academic programming they have for the Truck Driver School and some other ideas, but, but they've requested, and, and this is for your consideration, to transfer the 25 acres to the college, subject to the current lease with the Fair Association. They leased five acres for parking associated with the fairgrounds, but we've spoken to the college, and President Spalding's here, and they're aware of that. We've, we've discussed that. There's 180-day notice provision in there to terminate the lease if that's what they need to do. But anyway, there's a resolution in the packets. It would be approval of the resolution and approval of the transfer and to authorize staff to execute any documents.
Okay, excellent. President of Rowan Cabarrus Community College is here. If she, or, and/or Craig would like to say anything, who's the vice president, so welcome. We're glad you're here.
And, and I think we've got some other, okay, look at this higher. Yeah, we, we really are here to thank you. Everybody, I think, is, knows about the workforce development opportunities in truck driving. Are we good? And the college has had an extraordinary four years of development to get to this point. So we already have 380 graduates that are having an average starting salary of $60,000. We have a waiting list, not just for entry into the program, but also for hiring these graduates. So we know we've got to build capacity, and so this land will give us the opportunity to build a driving range, which Craig is going to talk about in just a second. I'm just going to mention that there are anticipated 2073 additional new jobs predicted by 2030, and that this driving range has been funded by the state legislature on land donated by Rowan County Commission. It is the donation of land that was the impetus for the Department of Transportation to also identify money for a road, and so we've had all hands on deck and all kinds of support. We just wanted to be here tonight to thank you particularly for it, and I'm going to introduce Craig, who almost needs no introduction to this group, to talk about the program so you can know what to expect.
Do you have a presentation?
Uh, there's one, there's one, and there's, I saw it pop up there for a second, but...
There, well, look at there's, he speaks, and wow.
And PowerPoints appear, yeah. But thanks. There we go. So, yeah, for people's reference, this is the plot of land identified in the green square at the bottom of the, of the map. The, the, one of the things we were looking for was level ground clear to put a, a driving pad onto. The, the super bonus of this was to have it adjacent to our campus. So we probably would have liked it anywhere, and we appreciate the, kind of the kindness of strangers. We've been couch surfing with this program for a long time. We lived at the old Intimidators Stadium for a long time. We currently live at the West End Plaza parking lot, and having a dedicated space like this will allow us to grow the program a, a great deal. When we talk about growing the program, demand is, is already high and growing. Dr. Spalding talked about the 2073 jobs predicted in the prosperity zone in, in the truck-driving transportation area, and these are some of the major haulers in the area. And we also know that with the 22 million square feet of, of speculative space under development and consideration along our section of I-85 here in Rowan County, that we know that those will likely be manufacturing or logistics facilities. Every one of them needs to have stuff brought in and stuff taken out, and so that traffic will only increase, and the demand for those jobs will increase as well. So, but we talk about this often as a truck-driving lot and driving range, but in the spirit of late-night infomercials, but wait, there's more. So in addition to the certified driver's license A and B training program that we're doing at West End Plaza right now, we are the state's... doing at West End Plaza right now, we are the state's largest certifier of fire driver operator licensure. And then we also train police officers and EMS drivers. There's a new requirement for all EMS, EMT students to complete an emergency vehicle operations course as part of their training and then get recertified on, on a regular basis. So this facility will allow us to do those as well and serve our local agencies.
Can, can we get the sheriff to be required to take that driving class? No?
The impact of this program means that we can have more classes. We can, the, the opportunity for us to operate on a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day schedule provides all kinds of opportunities for us to increase that since we're, we'll be in control of the site. It'll give us a safer training environment than, than doing it in a borrowed parking lot. It does give us the opportunity to do simultaneous coursework, which means at one end, we may be having a, an EVOs class for the EMT students and a truck-driving class at the other end. It's, it'll be large enough to accommodate that. It will allow us to support our, our local and regional logistics employers, many of whose, whose logos you saw earlier, will support those public safety agencies, and we will connect graduates with new high-paying careers. Dr. Spalding talked about the, the annual salaries for our graduates and the fact that they're snapped up even before the class ends. So opportunity for wins on lots of, on lots of fronts. The community, the employers, and the agencies and the workers all benefit from your investment in this and your assignment of this property to us. So thank you very much.
Two quick questions. Will we brand our own trucks finally? All right, that. All right.
We currently have a, a contract with another community college to provide the training, and so the trucks are branded with their, their trailers have their name on them. And as we transition the program to be an in-house program, they will most certainly say Rowan Cabarrus on them. Those will not be simultaneous necessarily. We won't necessarily break our contract with Caldwell at the same time we cut the ribbon on the, on the, on the pad, but it's a long-term goal to be.
Second question, the surface. Is that going to be black, black top or concrete?
Black top. It's a, it's a high, oh, but a heavy-use asphalt, not like your traditional parking lot. We're looking at possibly having the North Carolina Department of Transportation do the engineering work to design the strength and underlayment for that.
I know we met with the developer, the contractors over at the mall, and they said they're seeing some stress out there on the facilities. And so I would imagine, hopefully, two different styles.
Thicknesses of asphalt.
Yes.
Indeed, and the under, the.
Okay.
Substructure that goes.
Well, good news is, we're tearing that up anyway. So maybe we'll get a, maybe we'll get a discount for the work that's already being done.
Fire trucks are heavier than semis.
Thank you, guys, Judy.
I just want to thank you for going ahead and doing this, number one, because there is such a huge need. But I just wanted to share with you that when I talk to kids, teenagers, about how much you can make by driving truck, and I tell them 60 and sometimes all the way up to 90,000, they're like, what? So I think there's some interest out there.
Okay. Jay, what are the motions we need to make on this? Pass a resolution authorizing the transfer of property, allow the county manager to.
Or finance, or finance director to execute the, the transfer documents and the assignment of lease.
Okay.
The person, yeah, can she sign the, can? Can Jody sign the assignment of lease? I think just, just, just authorize county manager or the finance director to execute all documents in the package.
All right, that's the motion I make, those three things. Second, all right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you all. It's good partnership, so we appreciate it. Great opportunity. Yeah, thank you. Madam President.
I was going to say that the college has already had discussions with the Fair Association, and we think it's going to be a really good joint, not a joint venture out there because the college owns the property, but that they have agreed to let the Fair Association use the parking during the week of the fair. And, and so it's, it's not like we're taking anything away from the Fair Association. Of course, the college owns it now, and they'll be able to make whatever agreement they want. But I want you to know that they, that we got the Fair Association and the college already. We got them together, and they, you know, just wanted to be good partners out there because it, both of these things are, are important to the, of the college.
And thanks to Jim for being part of these discussions. I know he's been traipsing up and down the mountainside out there, so thank you, Jim Green. We appreciate you, buddy. All right. Consider permit to exceed PEO 7-23. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a PEO 7-23 request from Francisco Castro at 585 Oak Mountain Road, tax parcel 755-009. You may be familiar with this property. We had a permit to exceed back in May for a bull riding event with some live music. This is the same request. They're looking to do a similar event on October 28 from 2:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. That event is, they're looking to have about 100 people there. Otherwise, it's going to be pretty much in line with the last event they had out there. Reached out to the Sheriff's Department, see how things kind of went for that last event, and they didn't have any kind of incidents to report. And then checking the call logs there, there was only one call for a noise complaint during the last event. Other than that, everything else was pretty much the same as when they came here in May, back in May. So for the permit to exceed, there are 10 criteria to take a look at. We can pop through those here. So the first one is the timeliness of the application. We received this application on September 20, which was, will in advance for today's consideration. Feature of the requested activity, this is an event that will feature bull riding and live music. Previous experience of the applicant, it's the third time that we've worked with them on a permit to exceed, with the last one being in May. Time of the event will be on Saturday, October 28 from 2:00 to 9:30. Other activities in the vicinity, there were none to staff knowledge. Frequency of event, so this is the first one since May, so they're not all the time, but they are still looking at potential future events, which would come back before the board anytime they'd have one. Cultural or social benefits, they're expecting to attract about 100 people. Effects on the adjacent residential area, so this is kind of towards the back of that neighborhood. Is it a bit of a residential area? But this is the, not the first time they've had that out there. Previous violations, there's no zoning violations on the property. Then joining property owners were notified, so the planning department sent out notifications and posted signs on the site on October 6, which was 10 days before today's consideration. Procedure relief, just looking to approve, deny, or table the request. You can open the floor for public comment, but otherwise, both me and the applicant are here for any questions.
All right, with the applicant, like, would you like to say anything?
Like Aaron said, it's basically similar to the last one we had in May. Remember the last time we applied for 10 o'clock? But we pushed it back to nine just to have more consideration, but this time I asked for 9:30, which last event was good because at nine, it started raining. Soon as it started raining, everybody just left, so it was a successful event, and we're just trying to do this one last event. Probably be the last one for a year just because the weather is getting colder, and a lot of people won't show up when it's, you know, 30 degrees outside. So we're probably looking at the last event for this year. And I remember the last time we had talked about maybe finding something more permanent so we wouldn't have to do per application. I don't know if you guys ever talked about it or. I mean, we had to do a per application, I'll keep, you know, applying, like, we only have these events about three times a year, mostly during the summer when it's hot, because once it starts getting cold, like I said, people just don't show up, so.
Sure. I think the last time we looked at this, we talked about having the back of the music, the shell or whatever you want to call it, on the side where the people live and the music going away from them.
Yes, that's how we have it set up. We have the speakers facing towards the North Carolina State property, which, I mean, there's not my houses.
Thank you.
Just so you all know, I went to their last event. I did enter the bull riding competition. I won the senior division. I was not thrown from the bull. I later found out it was a, it was a sheep. It was not a bull. All right, none of that is true. I'm not getting on a bull, there's no way. All right. Hey, anything else? We appreciate you being here. All right. I will open up the floor if there's any public comment about this. All right, seen no public, public comment. We'll close the floor. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve PEO 7-23?
Still moved.
Say aye.
Aye.
All right, enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Have a safe event. Thanks for coming. Shane, ZTAO 3-23, satellite earth stations, take two.
So tomorrow will mark the one-year anniversary since the board heard the first application, which was a specific special-use permit request for a facility. Have control here. Help from IT if they can pull up the presentation for this one. But, magic. So, October 17 of '22, special-use permit for a specific application from Amazon for a site in West Rowan. And after that approval by the board, we, I don't want to go through all the timeline, but if board has any questions, be glad to answer them. But a couple months later, there was an appeal by a neighbor group, alleged deficiencies in the proceedings. So several months later, Amazon decided, no, we're just going to submit a text amendment, craft ordinance specific to our land use, which ironically, a year and a half prior to that, was a discussion and offering. Here's the current text that deal more with taller towers. Do you want to consider a text amendment? And they opted not to, but come full circle, the application was submitted for a text amendment. And three and a half months after that, Amazon actually had a settlement with this opposition group, so that's done as of September 28, I believe, and they withdrew their application. But rather than just letting all the progress that staff and the planning board, we worked with our cityscape telecommunications consultant, we felt like we'd just press on in case there's another one of these requests, and now applicant is the planning department. Let's first, just, just kind of refresh your memory, look at a few examples of a satellite earth station. Sounds like a fancy term, but it's nothing more than a satellite dish on the ground that is part of a network of communication information from the satellites in the orbit, both low and, low orbit, and I forget the other one, but nonetheless, they're at various stages in the atmosphere. Got a ground base that will communicate with that device and also be connected to fiber and the land-based application and their infrastructure for internet service and could be other data services. And with that, a customer at your home, you might have a satellite dish for internet or TV, it's going to talk directly with the satellites in the orbit. This ground station carries it on the, what they call the last leg of communication, which is all fiber and land-based there. But in the upper left, this is a typical example, relatively small dish, hard to see, but there's an antenna on the end of that dish, and you have a fence compound with some equipment that's installed, sort of a basic setup. In the upper right, looks a little bit more Star Trek-type, but it's covering satellites and antennas over this. In this example, I believe it was a, a poly covering, a plastic-type covering. Sometimes you'll see these on cruise ships, too, and I honestly don't know the benefit of having this versus exposed. Could be aesthetics or function. These are not so common around here, but I think in Canada and some international, Elon Musk's operation has one in Canada like this. In the lower, you see this more internationally. They're a bit larger, and again, I don't think that's as common than what we see here in the States. But again, for what it's worth, that's a, an earth station node or satellite node. So going back to the current text and what Amazon initially applied as, this is what you normally see as a special-use permit for a wireless support structure. Vertical real estate, if you will, to hang your antennas on. In this case here, there's two carriers on this tower. This is the antenna. This just gets it off the ground to provide its coverage needs. And on the ground base is the equipment compound where you have generators and other cabinetry at the base, which this is a close-up version of that. So these satellite nodes are more the fence compound with a small structure that is not very tall, but has a dish on it. So it still works with the current standard, but it provides some umbrances or limitations in that approach that this text will hopefully. The initial application, again, came from Amazon, and staff modified this definition to include the transmission of any wireless data. It's not just internet, it could be other things, too. We don't know, and it really don't matter when you're considering the technology of what it's doing, because we're focused on the land use itself. The important thing here is this is part of a provider's equipment and their infrastructure. It's not the individual homeowners or a business owner's antenna for their reception. Totally exempt from these regulations here, does not have any impact. It's part of the overall network for a provider, internet-based or, or any other wireless service. Next lead into the purpose and intent, citing one thing that, from the board's perspective, in 2018, we initiated this, the broadband task force identifying the rural area problems with internet service that this could also address. And as we move further down, one of the things that is important, because Chapter 47 of the Code of Federal Regulations has limitations for regulate, regulating earth stations. And primarily, because while, again, by definition, any of these devices can be earth stations, not just the, what we're talking about here, it could be at your home, that dish on your roof. So some places try to over-regulate things, which is not us, and within this, we have to be careful and have a layout of why we're trying to regulate this land. Go through it, there's specific areas that we try to address. Health and safety and the aesthetics is the, the primary function. And as we roll over to two, that's the, the latter part of the purpose and intent. That was also purposeful in citing this as the lead into the various standards because with our cityscape telecommunications consultant, we definitely need to be clear why we're having various standards, so there's no question of preemption concerns with that CFR. All right, I'm not going to read every one of these, but let me just hit a few highlights on the applicability. One, the 6.57 feet random number, but it is equivalent to two meters. So if the dish is under two meters, doesn't matter what it is, it's not. So if the dish is under two meters, doesn't matter what it is, it's not regulated. If it's over two meters or six point five, seven feet, then it may be as long as it's not in this group here where it's private, non-commercial. It's house or at your business, if you've got a nineteen eighties satellite dish in your backyard, or sometimes you even see them on top of gas stations that are kind of large, not regulating those. Move further down, location. S E S is short for satellite earth station is not, shall not be located in the conical or horizontal surface of the airport zone overlay. That's that tight area, it's a oval shape around the airport runway, about three miles either direction. That is for potential interference with altimeter devices. Older airplanes that might have a outdated altimeter. It hopefully address the potential for interference. It doesn't mean that there, there definitely is, but in some cases it's been cited in the past. And for added safety, it was included in here just to not allow them. Very little area of the counties within the airport zone, much of it's in Salisbury jurisdiction anyway. As we go down E or excuse me, D, the equipment compound limited to two acres. It cannot exceed that. That's during the planning board cited too, that you have this massive field of a bunch of dishes, kind of gets into the solar farm look and concerns with visibility. Because these could be cited anywhere in the county, rural area, commercial. So limited to acres. As an example, meaning the Amazon tower will be the same as the next application we get, but that facility I think was ten thousand square foot. So that's quarter of an acre. E, the height capped at twenty feet. Continuing down G, separation, not within five hundred feet of an existing dwelling in a residential zone. If it's in a commercial zone, it doesn't apply. That also has some relationship too to your R F exposure and providing good clearances of no home within that distance. H, screening, a type A screen, which is fence that you can't see through, evergreen, six foot tall, softening that ground compound a bit. And the last point I want to touch on documentation down in J, that they do have an FCC license, which they're the experts going to regulate the R F exposure and all the safety elements, interference with any land use. B is the FAA no hazard to air navigation. C is the ship or determination dealing with stork preservation. That's consistent with all of our other land uses dealing with telecom complexes. All right, so right now I did cite special use permit. This transition would be a S R, which stands for special requirements. It'd be an administrative approval if an application met all these standards. Allowed in all districts except A I, airport, industrial, county-owned land or anything new around the airport or any of our E D zones. Everywhere else would be fair game. I referenced earlier cityscape. So this, they have an attorney that's well-versed in FCC rules. They have engineers that understand and work with all the applicants. And so they also know what the industry standards and what they need for their. But nothing in here is a, a gotcha that we have a standard they couldn't meet. And most all the numeric, numeric references, the height, the distance away was from Amazon from the beginning. That was what their proposal was and met all the criteria identified by cityscape. Procedurally, the planning board recommended approval. They did recommend removing subsection two C, which dealt with the A Z O of the mid-Carolina airport. The only reason being is there was a, some concern that we, if we're regulating a public airport, what about all the private airports? Some discussion came back and forth and they defaulted to FAA determination being the one standard of whether it's a air navigation hazard or not. And in fairness to the planning board, it wasn't real clear at that time. But since the mid-Carolina airport is the only airport to our knowledge that has an instrument landing system, has that potential interference with its devices or landing at night or hazardous conditions, then it really doesn't apply to a private airport in that capacity. So I think this should be left in there. But again, to the board's benefit, that was not clear at the time. So that's why they decided to pull that. Have a statement of consistency for this text amendment that the planning board encouraged. It's on page three of the staff report. It's on the screen here. So we'll need to conduct the legislative hearing. It's been advertised two dates in the Salisbury Post, that adoption of statement. And then of course, approve, deny with modifications or table the request. Any questions of the board?
All right, if no questions, uh, then we will move, uh, to invite the public to speak on this. If there's anyone that would like to, wait here a few seconds, see if anyone wants to speak. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close, uh, the hearing and, uh, I'll offer up as a motion, um, this, uh, statement of reasonableness. Z T A O three dash two-three is reasonable, appropriate, necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County not previously envisioned by the east and west Rowan land use plan. Furthermore, the adoption is deemed an amendment to both plans for the following reasons. One, it allows for connectivity development that is in line with the county's task force of broadband development. The text, uh, number two, the text complies with federal guidelines set by the FCC and FAA while addressing the applicability, the aesthetics and the safety, among other meaningful items. And three, it allows for staff oversight for compliance and evaluation of criteria. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Then do we have a motion to approve Z T A O three dash two-three?
Still moved.
In a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys, uh, for, uh, any of our citizens Rowan County that like to watch these things for whatever reason. Our, uh, planning staff is, they're really spectacular and the technical work they do is beyond most of us. Um, we appreciate you making it easy on us, really do. Thank you, guys, both of you and Ed. All right, Scott, you're up. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about Project Hoist.
Good evening commissioners. Uh, thank you for hearing these requests today from the E D C on a couple of, uh, we think are pretty exciting projects. As Chairman Ed said, the first one is called, uh, Project Hoist. So, uh, this is an existing manufacturer in Rowan County. And it's experiencing a substantial, uh, experiencing a substantial increase in, in demand for its products and needs to expand, uh, to meet this demand. So, uh, the location under consideration for this expansion is the twenty acres that, uh, commissars sold and Summit Corporate Center, uh, agreed to sell at the previous meeting to Beacon Partners. See there on the map, right off of Summit Park Drive with some furniture on Corporate Center Drive. So if Rowan County has chosen for this project, Beacon Partners' intent is to build an eighty thousand square foot facility on the property. They would then lease this building to Project Hoist, who plans to create a hundred and seventy new jobs by the end of twenty twenty-eight. Now Beacon is estimating that the, um, investment into this new facility would be about seventeen million dollars, which they hope to complete by the end of twenty twenty-four. Now Project Hoist would also invest an additional four million dollars of equipment into the project. So using the commissioner's, uh, recently approved incentive grant program, this, uh, project is eligible for a level two grant, which is equivalent to forty-five percent of the new taxes paid over a five-year period. Now I have some numbers in your packet regarding this project and these are the assumptions we use to calculate this incentive benefit, uh, using the current county tax rate of fifty-eight cents, the twenty-one million of total investment, uh, in real and personal property into the project. And also we try to anticipate, uh, business personal property depreciation. We use the state's current depreciation schedule B and assume twelve-year lifespans for this depreciation. With that, we came up with the following numbers, uh, during the five incentivized years. Total revenue to the county collected would be about five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. We estimate the value of the incentive grant total over five years to be two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. This would give a net to the county during that period of about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. You look at that over a ten-year period, that's about one point one million dollars in total revenue. Uh, the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar grant, which leaves a net to the county of about eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, in regards to other assistance, we're working with E D P N C right now to pursue various state incentives for the project, including a J D grant, uh, training assistance and other programs. So after the public hearing with the board, uh, we're requesting the board do is approve a level two grant for Project Hoist under the terms stated in the county's current incentive grant program policy. So in closing, we're looking at about twenty-one million dollars of new investment in Rowan County, uh, one hundred and seventy new jobs over the next five years and about eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of net tax revenue to the county over a ten-year period. Hope the board will look favorably on this request. It's an opportunity to support one of our valued existing manufacturers who's, uh, looking at creating several high-paying or well-paying new jobs in Rowan County over the next five years. So with that, I'm happy, happy to answer any questions about the project.
Did you mention the ju- uh, salary ranges?
Uh, no, sir, the average salary, uh, we, we don't have a breakdown of all the different positions, but we've been told in the documentation provided to us by the state that the average salary is fifty-five thousand dollars.
Wow.
Of course, the, uh, current county average is a little over fifty thousand.
Great. Uh, is it, um, and I know this is an existing company, but they do have locations elsewhere, so we are competing.
That's correct. Uh, we've been told that the competition is between us and then, uh, the company's, uh, parent company has uh, locations in three other states and Mexico. So, uh, yes, we are competing for this project.
All right, any other questions for Scott? Scott, thanks. All right, we'll, we'll open the floor and we'll have a public hearing on specifically, uh, Project Hoist and the incentives that we're considering approving. Anyone like to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the economic development incentive plan for Project Hoist?
Still moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good, go get them.
Thanks.
All right, next.
All right, um, for, uh, the next project, this is, uh, codenamed Project Crow. Now this project, it's a new company, uh, it would be new to Rowan County. It's a distribution center project, uh, that's looking at the southeastern United States for a new distribution center. Uh, one of the candidates for this project is one of those new spec buildings you're seeing going up on Peeler Road, uh, that's being done by Crow Holdings. It's, uh, seven hundred and thirteen thousand square feet once it's going to be done. Uh, now if Rowan County were chosen, this company would create eighty new jobs over the next three years. And it's estimated the total investment in this project would be about a hundred and fourteen million dollars. That's the building, the tenant outfits and the new equipment. And, uh, the company behind Project Crow plans to begin operations at its chosen location at the end, I'm sorry, the third quarter of twenty twenty-four. All right, there's a map there just so the board can see the location it's behind, uh, what used to be C C I, um, and also the truck stop there on Peeler Road. This is the first of, uh, two buildings that Crow was planning for this, uh, location. So, uh, like Project Hoist and running the numbers for this project, uh, Project Crow would be eligible for a level two grant using the current policy, which again is forty-five percent of the new tax revenue for five years. And for those numbers, again, this is a, uh, a project with, uh, about a hundred and fourteen million of total investment. But we've been told by Crow Holdings, uh, their estimate for new, uh, value of this new building is seventy-three million dollars. It's about twenty-nine million dollars in tenant outfits for the building and about twelve million dollars of equipment that would be installed by the tenant. And also we tried to factor in depreciation for this project as well. And for this one, we used a ten-year lifespan. With those numbers that gave us, uh, during the five incentivized years, about three point three million of total revenue collected by the county. And incentive grant with a total value of one point four million, which leaves a net to the county during that five-year period of one point eight million dollars. Over ten years, the county is looking at about six point four million of total revenue minus the one point four million dollar grant. That's about four point nine million of net revenue to the county over a tenure. Now with this project, we're also working with Project Crow and E D P N C to pursue a, uh, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar one N C grant through the state of North Carolina. Uh, Rowan County would need to apply for this grant on the company's behalf. And if it was approved, the grant would be awarded to the company, uh, sorry, to the county, who would disburse funds to the company if the job creation requirements are met. Uh, now there's a local match for this grant, but it can be satisfied through the county's incentive grant.
Well, do you know what the match is?
It's, uh, one dollar for every two, uh, grand dollars. At a third of the value of this. Um, now also in addition to the state programs, the city of Salisbury is going to be holding a public hearing tomorrow evening to consider its own incentive grant for the project. So, uh, what E D C is asking of the board is after the public hearing is to consider approving a level two grant for Project Crow and also authorize, uh, county staff to submit a one N C fund grant application to the Department of Commerce in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on behalf of the project.
The city is looking at contributing to the project as a whole with a grant?
Yes, they'd be awarding, well, let me back up.
It's not like they do it and then we get that money back.
Uh, no, I mean, they'd be awarding their own incentive grant for the project, similar to what the county does. Now, uh, city of Salisbury back during the spring did award a real property grant to Crow to incentivize the project. So with the city council will be considering tomorrow night is an incentive grant on the real, I'm sorry, the personal property, since the real property has already been approved. So in closing, we're looking at about a hundred and fourteen million dollars of new investment in Rowan County by the project. Eighty new well-paying jobs over the next three years and about four point nine million dollars of net tax revenue to the county over ten years.
Go.
And thank you for considering this quest and.
Go back one slide. And do you have any idea salaries on this?
Yes, sir, uh, similar to the previous project, we're looking at a, uh, well above the county average, uh, just under fifty-three thousand dollars. And as far as the jobs themselves, this is a distribution center, so, um, uh, I won't say the majority of the jobs, but, uh, the highest number of jobs there will be your forklift operators, about twenty percent of the, the jobs there. On some other logistic-related type positions.
Okay, uh, same thing, we'll open the floor for public comment on Project Crow. If anyone would like to speak, we're discussing, uh, level two grant. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, let's see, we, uh, look, looking for a motion to approve a level two grant and also, um, authorize a submittal of one N C fund grant application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Do we have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Scott, and, uh, you know, unfortunately, I'm one of those, I, I guess I, uh, s- still look online at comments and I see a lot of comments from folks about all the empty, um, warehouses, you know, why? So there's an announcement about a new developer and they say, well, we've got all these empty warehouses. And I'm thinking, where's that? Because they're not and, uh, they're building them because they likely have a tenant. And so as we look back just a few years and we're looking at eight dollar and fifty cent an hour jobs here, right? And, uh, fifty-three thousand dollars a year, well, you got fifty-two weeks. It comes out to about twenty-five dollars an hour plus benefits. So these, these jobs are, we're just grateful for them. We're in a really good position right now. They're coming. They're coming at 100 and 200 at a time, these jobs. And I just had a company today to reach out about the Gil Dan, you know, they're looking for folks. And so I think we'll be able certainly to satisfy that. And we don't do any of this without our EDC. I know that grant application you have to do with the state with commerce will take time. We appreciate that and you guys continue doing a great job. We appreciate you.
We appreciate the board's support. And regarding these buildings, it's serving an important purpose. We need project, product, we need buildings, we need sites. So with these new buildings going online, we're getting a lot more looks than we would have even a year ago with some pretty big-name companies. So we, again, are grateful to our development community focusing on Rowan County right now. This is our time and hopefully we'll reap the benefits from it.
I think there was a report not long ago that there's 33 million square feet and currently in demand in the Charlotte region, which means that if we had 33 million square feet available right now, companies would come in and gobble it up almost overnight. But there's very little that's available. And so we are a focus of that demand and again, for that, we're, we're grateful right now. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to just reiterate what we do from time to time, but these grants are not checks that we go out and write before buildings are ever constructed. What happens is that after these buildings are constructed, then taxes are paid on that. And these, this incentive then is a portion of what they have paid to us going back to the owners of the building. So we are not sitting up here writing your checks out to the, to these projects. Yes, we redid the percentages and evidently, we're still pretty competitive even with the, the reductions that we did make on some things. But I just wanted the general public to know that incentives are, are paid back with tax dollars that had been paid in by the owners.
You remember what the level two incentive was before?
That percentage was 80%.
70? 80%. So Jim brings up a, a great point, is we've redone our incentive plan. And so what would have been an 80% is now 45. So that's, that's good for the community and the developers and companies still like us, so they're coming even at a rate that is about half of what we used to have.
I think it's important to note too, that there are job creation requirements for these grants and that's subject to county staff. If the goals aren't met, the grant is reduced. If it was a default, they'd have to repay some of this money. So there are some checks and balances in this program.
Yeah, that's a great point, because I'm also seeing conversation about a recent announcement. There are clawbacks in these. So if a company gets an incentive grant this year, they have to perform over the, the duration of that incentive period. And if they didn't meet the markers that we had agreed upon, then we reduce, their, their incentive is reduced, or if they were to pick up and go, they would have to pay back their incentive. So there are clawbacks, that's a good point to bring up.
Yeah. For example, if a company only met 90% of its goal for that year, then the grant would be reduced by 10%. Or if you had a company close or lay off over half of its workforce, then again, they have to repay the previous three years' worth of grants.
All right, good. Thank you. National reports.
All right, so we'll start with our cumulative expenditures through September. We are up $1.3 million or about 3.55%. So that's trending pretty close to last year at this point in time. Moving on to cumulative revenue, so cumulative revenue is up $4.1 million, which is about That's through September. So moving to property tax, so our property tax are up $14.4 million or 25.23%. Sales tax through July, so this is the first, so it's just the dot down here on the graph. It's up $137,000 or 4.27%. So we're still trending higher than last year.
It's on the way down.
It is. We'll see. So the other one shows the month over month, the next slide, but it's the same dollar figure, of course, because we're just one month in. And then lastly, our investment report for the quarter, so through September, our total portfolio was $223,78,740. Our weighted average was 4.17 total portfolio, and we're looking at an average maturity of 53 days. Of course, the, the top there is our investments in treasuries, and then our North Carolina Capital Management Trust is the second box on that chart. And, you know, we still keep a lot of money in, in that because it's very liquid through that fund and they're, they have as good of an interest rate right now as some of the other stuff that we can get. So they're still keeping the majority of our funds there.
We're not earning 4% on that full 220 annually, because that's...
No, it's a weighted average. Yeah.
That's everything that's in our account that gets spent.
Correctly, correct.
Because if you did 4% of 220, it's over 9 million. We're not earning $9 million in interest.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
It, it would be, when did we start this?
Um, so September of, so it's just been one year. September 19th is when we adopted the investment policy.
Would you, a year ago, would you, at our next meeting, is there a way for you to actually report though, what, since making this move, over that one-year period of time, what we did earn in interest?
Okay. Yeah, I can look at that. You have to keep in mind that we have to book that market-to-market, which is kind of strange and hard to explain in some respects, but it's something that the state requires us to do at year-end, so, but yeah, I can definitely look at that and see.
It'd be nice to know. All right, anything else for the cause? Do we have anything else? Is there anything that you wanted to take care of, Sarah? We got a joke going up here. All right, we'll deal with that later. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.